Okay, folks, we have a quorum, so let's get started, please. Let me start off by thanking you all for coming out and joining us this evening. Obviously, we can't do business without a quorum. And having dealt with a long agenda last night, I know it might be a sacrifice for a number of you to be here, so thank you, thank you for joining us. Before we start, I'm going to ask Mr. Cronin to give Mr. Cronin an opportunity to make an announcement regarding a non-agenda item, please.
Thank you, good evening. Very briefly, we wanted to announce that earlier today, we were notified by the state that the Woodland Street commercial vehicle exclusion has been approved, so officially, Woodland Street will be enacted as an exclusion route. Yeah, right? Long time coming for those folks. As I mentioned last night, that's part of the puzzle, so stay tuned for more, but this was breaking news today, we wanted to share that. And also, as a reminder, I'm sure the moderator will do this, election day is two weeks from tonight, the 25th, so thank you very much for coming, and on with the show.
Great. Okay, we'll proceed to Article 21. This is entitled "Report of the Community Preservation Committee." The article reads as follows: "To see if the town will vote to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Budget and to appropriate a reserve for later appropriation, monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues are available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year. Under reserves, they're identifying Community Housing Reserve, $70,000; Open Space Reserve, $70,000; Historic Resources Reserve, $70,000; Community Preservation Fund Budget Reserve, $490,000, for a total of $700,000. Appropriations, administrative functions to support the committee, $5,000; Dock System for Started Park, Parks and Rec, $5,812; Improvements to Community Farm Advocacy Committee, $52,100. To see if the town will vote to extend the sunset date from October 28, 2020 to June 30, 2021 for the appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from the CPC General Reserve approved by the October 19th Town Meeting for the purpose of assisting the Hollison Parks and Rec Department with renovations to town-owned youth baseball fields or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee is recorded as having voted unanimously in favor of the article. The motion is move to appropriate the annual community preservation reserves and appropriate from general reserve, perens, undesignated fund balance, closed perens, the amount printed in the warrant with the exception of deleting the figure $52,100 from the line item entitled "Improvements to Community Farm" and replacing it with $55,000." Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion as read? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 22, Transfer From Available Funds, A Sum Of Money For The Stabilization Fund, to see if the article reads as follows: "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the stabilization fund or take any action relative thereto. The suggested motion is move that the town vote to indefinitely postpone the article with which the FinCom concurs. The explanation is such that the stabilization fund has remained at or above 8.1% of the omnibus budget, and there's no need to transfer additional funds at this point in time." Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor of indefinitely postponement say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 23, Pension Liability Stabilization Fund, "To see if the town will vote to establish a pension liability stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the town's unfunded pension liability pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 40, Section 5D, and to transfer $43,524 into said fund or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to transfer $43,524 from the county retirement line of the FY21 omnibus budget into the town's pension reserve fund established pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 40, Section 5D. This recommendation was unanimously supported by the FinCom. The Select Board's comments are such that the town is legally obligated to make annual payments to the Millsix County Retirement System, included in these annual payments is an actuarially determined amount calculated to reduce the town's current liability. With the establishment of a new stabilization fund for pension liability, the town's intention is to invest the funds in P R I T, the same diversified portfolio in which the Obit Trust Fund is invested, as thus the specific purpose of this stabilization fund is to address the pension liability and is therefore eligible for this particular investment vehicle. To accomplish this investment strategy, the fund is specifically being set up under Section 5D rather than 5B, which is general stabilization funds." Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 24, Revolving Fund For The Purpose Of Supporting Recycling Initiatives In Town, sponsored by the Select Board, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to establish a revolving fund under Master General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and one-half for activity produced by town net metering, solar facility rental receipts, and energy aggregation, and any revenue generated through the town's recycling center located at Marshall Street, as shown on the table below, and to set a FY22 expenditure limit of $60,000 for such fund or take any action relative thereto, and the revolving fund, the authorized amount, and the fees, et cetera, identified in the article. The motion is that the town approve the article as printed in the warrant. The Finance Committee has recommended favorable action on this article unanimously. This article will allow the town to reinvest revenues received and savings generated from the energy aggregation program and the installation of the solar photovoltaic array at the landfill to support future environmental sustainability efforts, to pay any associated cost obligations for the program, and fund new energy savings programs. The wages allowed under expenses payable are intended to allow the town the flexibility to increase hours of operation of the recycling center as needed, for example, during storm response, the recycling center can more easily be opened to meet the needs of residents with brush, et cetera." Any discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 25, To Establish A Revolving Fund For The Purpose Of Supporting EV Charging Stations In Town, sponsored by the Select Board, excuse me, old dog, new tricks. "To see if the town will vote to accept Master General Law Chapter 53E and one-half for the purposes of accepting grants, fees, or donations for EV charging stations in town, to pay the cost of utilities, repairs, and maintenance, as shown on the table below, and to set a FY22 expenditure limit of $100,000 for such fund or take any action relative thereto, and the fund is depicted and the authorized spenders and the sources of funding are identified in the printed warrant." The Finance Committee recommends, again, favorable action on this unanimously. The motion is that the town move to approve the article as printed in the warrant. The town successfully engaged the Green Communities Grant Program to procure EV charging stations behind Town Hall. The next grant opportunities in the EV space will allow the town to collect revenue from users who plug into an EV charging station based on the price per kilowatt hour. By having the revolving fund established, the town will be ready to engage these grant opportunities to potentially add EV charging stations at municipal-owned properties throughout town. Is there any discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so voted. Article 26, Road Acceptance, Summit Point Drive, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept the road known as Summit Point Drive as a public way and which layout is shown more fully on the plan entitled Plan of Acceptance of Summit Point Drive Station 0+00 to Station Point 18+96.49 in Holliston, Massachusetts, dated September 10, 2020, scale 1-inch equals 40 feet. Prepared for Nature Walk Development LLC, 148 Park Drive, North Reading, Mass., 01864, prepared by Cornerstone Engineering, Inc., 10 Southwest Cut-off, Northborough, Mass., 01532, two sheets, and further, the town will accept the following easements: Drainage and Maintenance Easement, Drainage and Maintenance and Access Easement, Site Distance Easement, and Fire Assistant Easement. All is shown on the plan, which is unfiled in the Town Clerk's office, and further, that the Board may be authorized to enter into any and all documents and agreements necessary to effectuate the same or take any action relative thereto. The motion is to move to accept the street acceptance as printed in the warrant document and to authorize the Select Board to take any and all actions associated therewith, including the acceptance of deeds and pertinent easements with respect thereto." Is there a second? The Finance Committee recommends favorable action unanimously on this article. This article, by way of explanation, this article is submitted in accordance with a vote of the Planning Board at a meeting held on April 29, 2021. A public hearing was held by the Select Board on April 12 in 2020-21 per Master General Law Chapter 82 to lay out the road and refer it to Town Meeting for its consideration. As this requires, this is a road acceptance, it requires a two-thirds vote. If the vote's unanimous, I'll accept a voice vote, and if not, we'll proceed to a hand count. All those in favor of the article as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous, so voted. Article 27, Sponsored By The Planning Board, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section VIII, Temporary Moratorium On Recreational Marijuana Retailers. The effective date of the temporary moratorium has expired on June 15, 2029. Actions of the special Town Meeting in October 2018 prohibit marijuana retailers in all zoning districts or take any action relative thereto. The motion is that the town move to accept the zoning bylaw amendment as printed in the warrant." Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. The explanation is as follows: "The required Planning Board public hearing on this matter was held on April 29, 2021. This action would delete an expired provision but result in no substantive change to the town's continued prohibition of recreational marijuana retailers." Again, this will require a two-thirds vote, as it constitutes an amendment to the zoning bylaw. Again, we'll take a voice vote, and if it's... Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Town Council has reminded me that I need to record the Planning Board memo, so she has effectively earned her keep this evening by correcting an oversight by me very early on in the game. The Planning Board on May 5, 2021, sent to me the following letter with respect to Article 27, Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Dear Town Moderator, with regard to the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws at Section VIII, Temporary Moratorium On Recreational Marijuana, I would respectfully report that the Planning Board held a public hearing as required under Master General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, on April 29, 2021. The members voted four to zero to recommend support of the proposed article as printed in the warrant. If you have any questions regarding that, a Board member will be present. Okay, having included that, report from the Planning Board will now proceed to a vote. Again, if it's unanimous, I'll take a voice vote, and if not, we'll proceed to a hand vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 28, Change In Use Regulations, Section 3, Section F, sponsored by the Zoning Board of Appeals, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws at Section IIIIIF2 to require large-scale solar powered generation systems to acquire a special permit. Current bylaw prohibitions are not consistent with the provisions of Master General Law Chapter 48, Section 3 of the Dover Amendment with regard to solar access. Note, existing notations are shown in strike-through text and proposed is in bold italic, and the section of the zoning bylaw is identified in the warrant article indicating within which relevant zoning district a special permit will now be required. The motion is move that the article be indefinitely postponed. The required Planning Board public hearing on this matter was held on April 29. Special permit provisions would allow the Planning Board to impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations in time and use per Master General Law Chapter 48, Section 9. Although sponsored by the ZBA, the Planning Board would be the permit's special granting authority, as site plan view is also required." The motion here is to move to, and I do have, for purposes of the record, a copy of the Planning Board letter to me dated May 7 with respect to this article indicating that the Planning Board had voted four to zero to recommend support of the proposed article, notwithstanding that the motion this evening is to indefinitely postpone the article. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Meaning it stands indefinitely postponed. Article 29, Scenic Road Designation. This should be uplifting. Scenic Road Designation, South Street and Campasol Road, "To see if the town will vote to declare the following public ways to be scenic roads in accordance with the provisions of Section 15(c) of Master General Law Chapter 40, as governed locally by the Planning Board provisions of the Town General Bylaw. Article 9, Section 3, South Street, Campasol Road, or take any action relative thereto. Move that the town vote to approve South Street and Campasol Road as scenic roads in accordance with the provisions of Section 15(c) of Master General Law Chapter 40." A Planning Board comments: "To date, the town has designated 26 scenic roads. In close proximity to South Street and Campasol Road, Fisher and Rockland Streets are designated, as well as Adams and Cortland Streets. Scenic road designation controls disturbance of stone walls and cutting or removal of trees within the roadway right-of-way by adoption of performance standards and a public hearing requirement. The Planning Board is the permitting authority for the town's general bylaws." This vote requires a simple majority, so I'll take it by a voice vote. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 30, Easement, First Congregational Church, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen with an estimated cost of $51,000. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to purchase, take, or otherwise acquire a non-exclusive easement for purposes of installation and maintenance of a septic system for the Holliston Town Hall, in and over the land shown as proposed, 9,750 plus and minus square feet construction easement, as shown on the plan entitled Exhibit A by Applewood Survey, Inc., Holliston, Mass., Massachusetts, unfiled with the Town Clerk from First Congregational Church of Holliston, perens, of the United Church of Christ, closed perens, and to transfer from available funds a sum of money to acquire the same and to authorize the Select Board to execute any document or instruments necessary to effect said easement upon such terms as they deem to be in the best interest of the town, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town authorize the Select Board to purchase, accept, or take an easement as described in the warrant and appropriate $51,000 for the appropriation of Article 5, from the appropriation of Article 5 of the December 2020 special Town Meeting for said purposes." Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The FinCom recommends this article, recommends that the town appropriate $51,000 from the appropriations of Article 5 of the December 2020 special Town Meeting for the purposes stated, and their vote was unanimous. The following explanation is offered: "Article 5 of the special Town Meeting of December 5, 2020 approved a $150,000 project to replace the Town Hall septic system, based on a design that would stay within town-owned land and require pumping from behind Town Hall. Based on energy consumption of pumping and the associated costs and equipment, it was determined that a better outcome for the town would be a gravity system, though this could not be accommodated on town-owned land. As such, the town reached an agreement with the First Congregational Church to obtain use of the necessary square footage to allow the actual septic tanks to be on town-owned property, but for the leaching field to extend onto the corner of the church's property. Based on the value of the land, there's a cost associated with the arrangement, but due to the savings of not having to pump, the original appropriation for the cost can afford the town the ability to cover the cost of the easement and the cost of the new system with a gravity-based design." This involving the taking, purchasing, acquisition of an easement requires a two-thirds vote, so we'll first proceed with a voice vote, and if not unanimous, a hand vote. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted. Article 31, Blair Square Design Engineering, sponsored by the Select Board, and the estimated cost is $45,000. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $45,000 for the design and engineering services to produce construction documents based on preliminary design on the Blair Square area or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $45,000 for the stated purpose in the article." Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommends that the article, that the town raise and appropriate $45,000 for the purpose stated in the article, and their vote was unanimous. The following explanation is offered: "The Blair Square Committee has engaged a firm with funds donated for the purpose of developing a rendering schematic of the future Blair Square, perens, area bounded by Front Street, Central Street, Railroad Street, and Winter. The article would allow for the rendering to be further developed into the construction documents necessary to move the design to the shovel-ready phase. When construction documents are available, the Blair Square Committee plans to request funding of the construction project from the Community Preservation Committee, potentially for consideration at the October 21 special Town Meeting." This requires a simple majority. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Dennis Chamberlain?
Yes. So Frank Chamberlain, 333 Hollis Street, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. By the way, thank you for your earlier vote in support of our article from this evening. Just real quick, wanted to mention that we have met with the Blair Square proponents on a preliminary basis for some of these design changes, but I just want to make it clear to Town Meeting that we have not discussed a final proposal. There are some concerns, and CTC has not yet committed funding to the completion of this project. So not in opposition, not saying anything, I just want the town to be aware that we have not agreed to provide anything beyond, we haven't agreed to provide anything as yet, we're still in the discussion phases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 32, Demolition Of Structure At Nine Green Street, sponsored by the Select Board, the estimated cost is $118,500. The article is "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $118,500 for the demolition of the Nine Green Street structure and related costs or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $118,500 for the purpose stated in the article." Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. The FinCom recommends that the town raise and appropriate $118,500 for the stated purpose, and their vote was unanimous. I offer the following explanation: "The town owns Nine Green Street through a property taking in 2019. The December 5, 2020 special Town Meeting approved the designs/engineering required to address the environmental concerns with the property specifically by providing, one, a demolition plan, and two, a surface water design plan, and three, a lot design plan. Funding of the demolition is being requested and will be followed by an additional round of public discussion following this annual Town Meeting, as the preliminary surface water design plan and lot design plans are in draft stage and ready for review and public input." Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 33, Feasibility Study For The DPW Facility, sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $75,000. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds $75,000 for the design and engineering services to produce a feasibility study for planning of the future facility needs of the Department of Public Works or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 for the purpose stated in the article." Is there a second?
Second.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the town raise and appropriate $75,000 for the stated purpose. I offer the following explanation: "The town operates two DPW facilities, one on Arch Street houses primarily the functions of the Highway Division, and Central Street houses primarily the functions of the Water Division. Both facilities are past their useful life. A feasibility study is a process necessary for the town to develop a strategy for housing a public works in the future." Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 34, Public Safety, Signs And Equipment, sponsored by the Select Board with an estimated cost of $21,837. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds $21,837 for the purposes of acquiring and installing signs and equipment recommended by the Traffic Advisory Committee, TAC, at Woodland Street, at Church and Railroad Streets, and Elm Street, or take any action relative thereto. Move that the town vote to appropriate $21,837 from Article 4 of the October 19 special Town Meeting for the purpose stated in the article." Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. The FinCom recommended that the sum of $21,837 be appropriated for the purposes stated in the article, a six in favor, one abstaining with Ms. Necessity abstaining. The following explanation is offered: "The Traffic Advisory Committee, TAC, was formed in 2019 to hear residents' positions and make recommendations on traffic calming..." That's a nice concept. "...traffic calming, enforcement, and infrastructure to the Select Board. In February 2021, the Select Board accepted a TAC request for signage and equipment to improve safety around the designated school safety zone for Adams Middle School, Miller Elementary School, and Placentino Elementary School. The improvements are supported by the Safe Routes to School Task Force and partially included in Holliston's Complete Streets Tier Two Project Prioritization List. The signage and equipment include four-way LED stop signs at Church, Railroad, and Church Streets, and entering school safety zone sign on Elm Street, and a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the New Rail Trail Crosswalk on Woodland Street. This requires a majority vote." Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So voted. Article 35, Creation Of A Comprehensive Long-Range Planning Committee, this is sponsored by Mary Greendale, it's a citizen's petition, submitted by Mary Greendale, sponsored by a citizen's petition, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the creation of a comprehensive long-range planning committee to develop envisioning future Holliston, a vision statement as Phase One of a comprehensive long-range plan that will guide government and other local actions for the next 10 to 15 years, and will protect Holliston's assets and character, enhance its quality of life, and balance town needs with the ability to pay or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the town approve the article as printed in the warrant." Is there a second?
Second.
And the Finance Committee voted unanimous, voted unanimously favorable action. We'll hear from the petitioner, Mary Greendale, in support of the article.
Mary Greendale, 198 Highland Street. I will be brief, since we're all in the mood to go home, and everybody's in such a favorable mood, I don't want to blow anything. So, obviously, all of this is written here, but what happened, what made me do it this, and what made me do it this way. A couple of years ago, the school committee, I think it was Stacy, but it may have been more than just one person, were adamant that they thought we needed a town-wide plan that would encompass and kind of embrace all of the plans that exist by different departments. We have an open space plan, we have, the schools certainly have a strategic plan, the library does. There are a bunch of plans that are out there. There are also a bunch of plans that are out there that are obsolete by date, but not necessarily by content. For example, I went to the old, or the latest, it's 1999, master plan, in which what we said we wanted was to maintain the historic character, preserve the small-town feel, and protect open space. I'm going to bet all of those are probably still what this community wants. But it's time to go back and look at what we have for plans, not just master plans, but plans, we have plans that have plans. We have plans on virtually every subject that you could think of. I won't bore you with them. I'd like to see all of those come together. I'd like to see a, I don't know if it's a spreadsheet or database, whatever the format is, that kind of organizes what we're saying, and it's going to end up being a pretty massive piece of information, I understand. But the goal is to have good cross-section of everything that we do and goes on in town. But I didn't want it to be top-down. I didn't want it to be the Select Board decided we should do this, or the Planning Board decided we should do this, or whatever. I turned it around and said, "I really want you and me, as people in town, to decide if we really want this. Is it important to have a plan that tells us where we're going?" Keith Bude had a great line the other day, "It doesn't matter what road you're on if you don't know where you're going." Hmm, good point. Doesn't matter. And I think it's about time we do start to think about where we're going. We're running out of, you know, buildable land, where there are any number of reasons, you all know them. So I did put together the petition, I went around and I talked to the Select Board first, and I have talked to the Concom, I've talked to just a couple of folks that are on the FinCom, but I don't, I don't remember going to collectively, did I? I don't think I did. But the Planning Board, the Open Space, Youth and Family Services, Trails Committee, Community Farm, Council on Aging, the Governance Committee, you know, I did it all, and I talked to them, and everybody was supportive. Some took votes, some just, you know, agreed. Library raised a really good point. They were concerned that they didn't want to lose the autonomy of implementing their own plan. Well, I can understand that, and that's certainly something that has to remain intact. This committee is not intended to overrule and has no authority to overrule any other department, so that shouldn't be a concern. So the bottom line is that, one, we would collect all of the studies, go through, assemble that into the vision data. The second part is where I think we really need the townspeople to step up. This is the part where you say what you really think and what you really feel. And with modern technology of Zoom meetings, where we are, now know we can get 350 people, okay? That happened for one of the meetings on 555. So we know we can get a lot of people together to talk. Can't do it... Can't do it in real life, but it's okay on Zoom. We also know that we can do things like Survey Monkey and get really good response in terms of the numbers of responses. So the community would have to participate in this outreach, the committee would be the one that was driving it, they would have to organize how it's all going to work. But the community would have to participate, and that's where I really need to make sure that the folks really care about this. Because if you're going to get the survey and just toss it aside or not reply to it online or whatever the expectation is, then frankly, this is just a waste of time. Now, at this point, we don't have to spend money. At this point, we're reviewing the plans, aggregating the information in some format, getting feedback from the community to start setting some outline of a vision. And then when you start talking about really putting in the plans that are going to implement that vision by department, I don't know, we'll see. What I did very specifically was to make this a job for the town administrator because I knew he just didn't have enough to keep him going, and he was getting a little bored, and I thought, well, this will be something for him, he'll enjoy it. It is also intended to be a standing committee. That means I think we need somebody, some committee that is responsible for the long-range plan, keeping an eye on it, periodically reporting back to town meeting, or at least to the Select Board or to the Planning Board, on what is going on, whether or not it's working, are things falling apart in any place. So the reason for it being a standing committee is so that nobody drops the ball. Because right now, it's not that nobody wants to do the planning, nobody has the time to do the planning. Planning Board doesn't have time to do it, they're busy dealing with the brushfires and raging blazes that they have. So that's my suggestion, I ask for your support, I think it's time that we do this, I think it will help in making decisions around money, I think it will help in making decisions around a whole lot of things. So please support the article. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll move to a vote then. All those in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Those opposed, so voted. Article 36, create section nine of bylaw, chapter XXVI, sponsored by Mr. Alfred, a citizen's petition. The article reads as follows, to see if the town will vote to amend chapter XXVI of the general bylaws by adding a new section nine as follows. Section nine, all elected town officials shall be provided with a town-owned email account for the duration of this service to the town. Appointed committee members may also be provided with a town-owned email account at the discretion of the town administrator. Any elected or appointed official who receives a town-owned email account shall use the town-owned email account for all official communication related to their office until they no longer hold the elected or appointed position or take any action relative thereto. The motion is move that the article, move that the town approve the article as printed in the warrant, is there a second? The Finance Committee took a vote and recommended favorable action on the article, six in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining with Mr. Alfred abstaining. Suggested explanation, we'll have some comments from Mr. Alfred.
Evening. It's funny, I don't think I've ever made it this late in a town meeting without speaking, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Alfred, 315 High Street.
Thank you.
And now, now I've made it later. So anyway, the article that I'm proposing does a number of things, four main things. Really what it is, is it protects the town from the liability of open records requests when all of, all of the documents, emails that are sent by elected and appointed officials that are public records, and so having them owned by the town in their own email system will help protect the town and really ensure that if we do have any open meeting, open records request, regardless of whether the official has left the board, left town, or unfortunately passed away, we'd still have control over that and we could meet those legal obligations without actually having to reach out to that individual. It also separates a person's personal email from their professional email. Most, a lot of people have jobs, their employers give them an email account, their employer wouldn't want them to be using their personal account for that job. Elected town officials are considered special municipal employees, so we are technically employees of the town, and so I just think it's best, best practice that we use town-owned email for that, for that purpose. Additionally, I think, you know, something for residents is, it also increases the ability to communicate with your elected officials. I've seen on Facebook a lot of times people saying, hey, how can I reach out to this person or that? I saw a lot of it with 555, how can we reach out to the members of the Planning Board? And the answer was because they didn't actually have town email addresses and people weren't giving out their personal email addresses, for good reason, people had to send questions and things to the town planner. Well, if they had an email, it would be linked on their website, you could send an email directly to members of the Planning Board, and therefore you could actually have real constituent services directly back and forth with those that you elect and that you hold responsible to do the work for the town. And lastly, I'd say, you know, it aids in communication between the board, between boards, and as members of the Finance Committee have reached out to different boards in town, sometimes we have, either had the email addresses, or we actually sent an email to an email account that, for whatever reason, isn't being used, and then we hear back and say, well, I never got the email. Well, if everyone is using their town email addresses, there would never be that problem, and we wouldn't have any of those kind of miscommunications. The only counter to this, that I've heard anyway, is that, you know, it's a little bit inconvenient. And, you know, look, I get it, it's another email account, but it's pretty easy, I have the Gmail app on my phone, I can toggle back and forth between the two different email accounts, it's seamless, it doesn't have any real additional trauma to my day, I guess if you will. I get pop-up notifications when I get an email, it's just very, it's very convenient, so I would say that, you know, it is actually fairly convenient, and so anyway, for all those reasons, I respectfully request that you vote yes on this article.
Good evening. This item is interesting, when I first joined the board, I spoke about the need for townwide email availability for this purpose that Dan just uttered. And subsequently, the board adopted an administrative procedure that allows elected and appointed officials to have town-issued Gmail accounts. This article, however, goes beyond the normal reach of what would otherwise be considered an administrative function. This article would memorialize in our bylaws the use of an email for communication. This bylaw proposal is unenforceable, particularly because of the word email. Today, we understand email, in five years, that particular manner of communication may be defunct or not used, what then? Furthermore, the item speaks to the need for communication between boards for public records purposes. After speaking with town council, it's quite clear that despite the fact that we'd be directing through this proposal email to flow through a Gmail account issued by the town, it does not restrict the breadth of reach for public records. Individuals currently who do not choose to have a Gmail account issued by the town are still beholden to release public records that may have reached their personal accounts. They take on that risk, and they're notified of that risk when they decide not to use a town-issued email. So we encourage folks to recognize that this petition article is an overreach, there's no need for it, most particularly, it's unenforceable, and frankly, it's flawed with its language. Earlier this evening, the Select Board had a consensus on this item, we recommend not approval. Thank you.
Further discussion, just a second, further discussion?
So if any of us aren't using email in five years, first of all, I'll give you all five dollars. And secondly, if that is the case, we can always go, we can amend the bylaw. This is simply something to protect all of us, even if the other, even if our other accounts are still searchable, this protects the town, we have control over this system, most of the information should be going through there, whether it's officially enforceable or not, creating the bylaw, creating the, the sort of, the expectation that people use it, and ensure that we have the ability for constituents to reach out to their elected officials is incredibly important, so again, I would urge you to vote yes.
Any further, Mr. Cronin?
One other item I forgot to mention was, in preparation for this evening's meeting, our town administrator did attempt to find out from other communities if there is any such bylaw in place for this type of function, there aren't any that we are aware of. This is an administrative tool, and it is not memorialized in any surrounding community's bylaws.
Okay, yes, Pam? I might say this is a less, different tone here tonight, former citizen of the DIA, Pam Zico, I recognize now.
Hi, Pam Zico, 185th Street. I do notice in the article, Dan, you know, it really restricts all official communication to an email account. So I didn't like that part of it, any elected or appointed official who receives a town-owned email account shall use this town-owned email account for all official communication related to their office until they're no longer. So I know that some of us still use the phone, or we get out in a meeting, so, I thought that was a little restrictive of that sentence. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Lisa Koshen, 158 Winthrop Street, I just have a question. So in the example that was used, I'm wondering how now you would reach out to a Planning Board member? I just assumed that I'm on the school committee and we automatically got email addresses, and that's how people contact me, and I just assumed it was the same for all town officials. So I'm wondering if I wanted to contact a member of the Planning Board, how I would do that now, without this?
Travis?
Yeah. Anybody can take that.
You are Travis O'Hearn, the town administrator, right?
Yeah. I look like Ben Sparrow, but I'm Travis O'Hearn. So I believe, and I don't want to speak for that board, so I'll just, because I know there's been a lot of communication going through the Planning Board, it has all flowed through the town planner, there has been a substantial amount of communication in the past few months related to that, so it just allows one point of contact. So if you go to the website, right, you'll see any activated email that you can click on and immediately generate an email. The only one, if you go to the Planning Board's website, would be the town planner, and then the town planner coordinates with all members of the Planning Board. And that's how we've worked that, it's a preference. And again, you know, I think what we have done, Chris Mayo, his IT director, will reach out to anybody incoming, make sure that they understand the offer, that they can have a town-owned email and walk them through the process, so we give them that option, and that's what the policy is at the moment, and the Planning Board, that's how they operate. If you were to go to their webpage, you would just go to Karen Sherman as the town planner, and then reach out to those members through her.
Anne Marie Pilch, 107 Juniper Road, and I'm a member of the Open Space Committee and the Conservation Commission. And on that basis, I would like to have a town email, but I don't know that we really need a bylaw for that. Do we have, I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen if we have their support to just make this a normal way of doing business.
John, do you want to respond to that, or not?
I need your question, sorry.
Okay. She wanted to know whether or not it necessitated a bylaw change, or could there simply be requests made of the Board of Selectmen that had mattered for policy that this be implemented, if they chose to do so?
I understand the question, I think it's clear, the need for a bylaw is restrictive here, and it's unenforceable. You can put a place, you could put a bylaw in place, but you can't limit the individual to using that email for exclusive use and contact for public records. The public records law, according to our general counsel earlier this evening, goes beyond any email that's assigned to you. If you choose to get a town, if you're assigned a town email through this bylaw, and you choose to receive emails through your Hotmail or some other account, you're welcoming the public records into your world, so it's counteractive, it doesn't, this, again, I just want to restate, this bylaw is unenforceable, that's the bottom line.
Further discussion? Yes, Anne Marie?
I agree, I don't think we need a bylaw, and I don't think we should need to mandate communication this way, I just think that there is a need for town emails, for town officials, whether they're appointed or elected, to enhance communication with the townspeople.
We have that, we have a policy.
But I, as a board member and a committee member, was not aware of that.
Okay. Tina, did you want to be heard?
Tina Heim, 142 Union Street, Ms. Pilch, yes, you certainly can reach out to the town administrator, that is written here, that appointed committee members, you are appointed? Yes, yes. May be provided town-owned email, you just need to go through the town administrator. And so to the point that we need a policy, yes, and this is something the board can discuss if it needs updated or amendments, but I agree with you that a bylaw is restrictive. I would also point out that this is difficult to have a bylaw requiring that you only use a town email address. I work outside the home, like many of you, I have four children, I have multiple email addresses, I have multiple contacts coming to me for the multiple facets of my life to be mandated to use only one for communication for town. I think I do demonstrate best practice and use my town email address, but to be required to when there's no real enforcement is cumbersome. I would be concerned that a bylaw such as this would serve as a disincentive for people like me who are looking to run for office, who live very busy, complicated lives. I would be concerned, again, that it would serve as a disincentive. When best policy is in place, and I believe most of us follow it, I think this is excessive in terms of mandating.
Hi, my name is Joshua Mann, 75 Wilkins Road, and I'm an elected member of the Board of Health. Within two days of being elected, my private email address was added to an email chain of an angry resident. Without me asking, I was never given a town email address. Best practice is here is clearly to automatically assign town email addresses, without a doubt. It's a no-brainer, please vote yes for this.
Further discussion?
Michelle Zeimer, 583 Winter Street, member of the Finance Committee. So I have two questions. One, I have town email, and I get email from people who go to the town website and then to the Finance Committee page, click on my name and send me emails, they just do that automatically. If they want to reach another elected or appointed official who doesn't have town email, how do they do that? If a resident just wants to reach someone who doesn't have town email, how do they easily
So for anybody, for any individual department that has a department head, there would be anybody, there would be at least one active email to go through. I think the one part over here was, you know, when this policy was adopted, I believe it was two years ago, the IT director met with each department head to let them know about the policy, try to make sure that everybody understood that they have access, if they would like a town email, so we'll make sure that we follow up on that. And for, in terms of, you know, how an individual email got on an email chain when you were first put on, I can't speak directly to that, but any, any of the smaller committees that don't have a staff person specifically listed so that you would access through that department head, there should be a note that says that you would go through the town administrator's office. And so my office does deal with quite a few connecting people who have chosen not to have town emails, and that's just a role that we play.
Okay, and then as to having too many emails, my son set up my town email, so it comes in through my personal email. It's not like I have a lot of email, I can tell it's a town email because on the top it just says, I forget if it's N. Zeimer, Zeimer M. at Holliston, I at FinCom, whatever, so it's not like it's a separate email, it just comes in with my other email, it's not an inconvenience at all.
Thank you, Michelle. Further comments? Don't hurry, sorry, we, we're not hurrying.
Hi, so I just wanted to say, 807 Morton, in the spirit of, I don't know, collaboration, cooperation? cooperation, couldn't we say that the Select Board will form a policy that if you are elected or appointed, you will automatically be issued this email address? And it is the preference, recommendation, requirement, please do it. If you are elected, do all your business through here. As somebody who has been on a board, I would never conduct school business or town business on my personal email, because if somebody sues the town or sues the school, I don't want them subpoenaing my personal email. But nobody wants that anyway, but you know what I'm saying? Protect yourself. So can't we just have a policy and say, "This is going to be the new policy going forward, we don't need a bylaw," because I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with you. They're not stuck on a bylaw, so can't we just meet in the middle?
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Okay.
The direction that we've been provided to individuals to date is a guidance, and I hear you loud and clear that a more formal policy from our technology director would probably satisfy and address the concerns of the gentleman who spoke earlier, who's newly elected and probably should have been pinged right away. Here's an offer for you. You might want to consider taking it. If not, here are the risks. But administratively, I think we can clean that up and definitely look into that. Good point, Joan. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Ko Chin?
Lisa Koshen, 158 Winthrop Street. I love the idea of you guys collaborating and coming up with a policy, but I'm not sure it's going to happen. And my concern is that I feel like it needs to be automatic, that you can reach your public officials. Like, I don't like the idea that, I've never had a need to reach out to the planning board, but it just rubs me the wrong way that there's no, I can't send an email to every planning board member if there's something that is on my mind. And I'll be honest, in the interest of full disclosure, I get a gazillion emails as a school committee member, and I can't answer every single one of them, especially not in a timely manner, but I read every single one of them. And that always informs the decisions that I'm making. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to have the same for every elected official. I just, I just assumed this was already happening. So I think that this is a really good change, if maybe it needs to be tweaked, but I think the idea behind it is right on.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Alfred?
So I too love the idea of collaborating with the Finance, sorry, with the Select Board. However, just to be clear, I'm actually proposing this as an individual and not as a member of the Finance Committee, so this would not create, you know, Finance Committee, Select Board love overnight. I'm not sure what would. Maybe a lot of some, anyway. So what I'd like to propose is that we vote this into the bylaws, then we request that the Select Board create a policy that requires town email addresses to be provided and used by town officials, so they can, all citizens can reach out to them. And the next town meeting, once that's done, we can remove this bylaw and move on with our lives. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote on the motion. And the motion is that the town approve the article as printed in the warrant. We'll do it by voice vote. If I have any question about the vote, or if I'm requested to follow it with a hand count, I'll respect that request. So let's proceed to a voice vote first. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye. Those opposed? The motion is defeated. Before we get to Article 37, I just wanted to make an advanced closing comment. I did thank you when you first came here this evening to do the town's business, and I meant that, but I just wanted to follow you up, follow it up with just by letting you know that we had 104 people check in here to join us this evening. We had well over 200 last night, but there's only 104 here this evening. And that means that if five of you decided to do something else tonight, then the town's business would have come to a standstill. And while the number of the articles from Article 21 until now have been routine and engendered no debate, there are various aspects of our life here in town that are dependent upon those articles being passed. And without you folks, 104 of you coming here this evening, that would not have taken place. So I just want to acknowledge that, and thank you for your civic duty and coming in and doing that. It's not the most entertaining way to spend a couple of hours of your evening, but it's most appreciated. On behalf of the boards and FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and the others that are joining me here, I want to thank you for that. Okay, well, let's proceed to Article 37 if we can. This is the last article of the evening. It is a citizen's petition submitted by what's described to me as an unknown citizen. It reads as follows, "To see if the town will vote to expand the Select Board to five members by replacing Article 3, Section 1 of the Town of Holliston general bylaws with the following. Number one, membership and term of office. The town shall have a Select Board consisting of five members elected for a term of three years each, and so elected that the term of no more than two shall expire in any one year, and that the two new positions be filled by adding them to the ballot of the 2022 annual town election, with one new member elected to a two-year term and the other elected to a three-year term." The motion is slightly different than that published in the warrant, but it's been approved by town council and by me, in that it altered the timing of the annual election that was going to be utilized to fill the positions of the newly-created board. The Finance Committee had previously voted, I'm sorry, that the Finance Committee will make a recommendation at town meeting, and so I'm going to give them an opportunity to do that following the motion. The motion is that the town replace Article 3, Section 1 of the Town of Holliston general bylaws with the language that I just described. Is there a second to the motion? Okay. Mr. Shada, does your committee have a recommendation to make?
Yes, Ken Shada, 676 Fisk. Just to be clear, we have, as a committee, we have no position on the article itself. The reason for our recommendation was because the original wording of the article contained the need for a special election, and that involved money.
Right.
Okay. With the new motion that no longer requires that money, we felt it was not appropriate for us to weigh in, because there was no financial component anymore.
Okay, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. I understood that, but thank you. Thanks for explaining that to the town. Now, I understand that the petition was unidentified, but that doesn't mean that it can't be discussed or presented by another citizen. Is there a citizen who'd like to step forward to present the article? Yes, sir?
Tim Maxwell, 118 Norfolk Street. Tonight, I'm a member of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee does not have an official, you just heard the words of Ken. Sue or Ceci and I were particularly interested with this petition article, and we supported it moving forward. Sue couldn't be here tonight because she had to travel out of state, so I promised her I would read a beautiful statement that she made and prepared. A little over two years ago, more than 80% of towns with more than 10,000 in population had moved to a five-person Select Board. Why? Towns who have shifted to a five-person Select Board found that they are better able to distribute the workload, that they have more diverse perspectives and experiences, and they are enabled to have a broader representation of all residents in their town, so all views can be heard and considered, not just a concentrated few. The Select Board has overall responsibility for the general operations of our town. Those responsibilities only continue to expand as our town continues to grow. As we heard Mr. Cronin say last evening, the Select Board took on 23 projects in the last year, and several of those need additional focus moving forward. Ms. Greendale noted several issues that she believes the town should be addressing. We need a Select Board that has the capacity and capabilities to be able to address the growing expectations and needs of our town. A larger board allows for greater collaboration and the ability to explore issues. It makes it much harder to push things through when requiring a majority of three versus two votes. A larger board opens more seats for different skill sets, experiences, backgrounds, and professions. Our town will benefit from a broader perspective and more ideas. There is less potential for bias. A board that's too small can become insular, missing the perspectives needed for informed and effective decision-making. With five, there is better accessibility to residents. Thus, we have the ability to reach someone faster with concerns, feedback, or on other matters. Additionally, there are more people to do the work and more effectively distribute that workload. A Select Board that is too small struggles with resources, people power, to properly perform the normal responsibilities and take part in additional committee work that we've seen expanding in our town. Many of the Select Board members have full-time jobs, and even without, there's only so much that three people can do. Five can better handle the responsibility of our growing town. Overall, a five-member board would mean broader representation of the town and greater diversity, better functioning through use of subcommittees. Sue and I both strongly believe that we should approve this motion, and our Select Board should move to five members. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Cronin?
By the way, before I move on to my remarks, I just wanted to pass along my best wishes to Tim. He's not running for reelection on the Finance Committee. He's one of the gentlemen that we work with in town all the time, and I want to wish you best wishes, and to Sue who's moved on as well. This article was very interesting to us. The petition seeks to accomplish something that currently is in the focus of our board. We had a conversation with the Governance Committee when we formed that group last year about variety of different areas within our town that could make benefit of some of these types of improvements that Tim just articulated. This evening, as Mr. Mayor just indicated, there are 104 citizens here. Last fall, the Finance Committee had expressed concerns about making bylaws with such minimal numbers. While we have the potential to do so this evening, I just wanted to remind folks that this bylaw is substantial. It would substantially impact the Executive Board in Holliston. I choose to acknowledge this evening that while I find it intriguing, I'd like to hear more about it. The pros, the cons, the analysis. Tim and Sue apparently have done some work to look at other communities. But over the next year, the Governance Committee will be doing that same work. Furthermore, this summer, the Division of Local Services will be sending out its Technical Assistance Bureau to Holliston. I alluded to this the other day, that this particular brand of folks will be coming in, speaking of bias, without bias, to review our town functioning, our financial arrangements, our workflows. They'll be making recommendations as well. We're about ready to receive quite a lot of data and information on how Holliston should look over the next several years. I would recommend, and my colleagues agree through consensus this evening, that folks not vote this article in, because at this point, it's premature. Voting it in this evening would have a direct and impactful effect on our governance without the benefit of a thorough and complete analysis that we do plan to do, hopefully this time next year. I would like to thank the petitioners for being thoughtful about it. I think they're on to something, but honestly, it's very, very premature to make this kind of a decision this evening. Thank you, respectfully.
Mary? It's okay.
Mary Greendale, 198 Highland Street. This is really just a point of information. Can we even do this just by bylaw? Don't we have to go to the legislature with a special act, or is that only for communities with charters?
So the interesting thing is, if you look at the section of the law relating to charters, this kind of decision couldn't be accomplished by a simple amendment of a charter. It would have to go through a charter commission process, which involves a lot of public hearings and discussion and input. But because you aren't a charter committee, it is likely that this would be approved if the town meeting were to pass it. So it's just the uniqueness of Holliston in that you don't have a charter, that you could accomplish it this way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Lynn?
Len Engel, 660 Winter Street, and a member of the Governance Committee. Reviewing the Select Board bylaw is on our list of things to take on, possibly over the next year. And so we plan on taking a deep dive into this.
Further discussion? Yes, chief?
Michael Cassidy, 51 Burnout Road, Fire Chief. In light of the fact that this is going to be evaluated by not only a committee from within town, but also outside resources that are coming in from the state, I would like to make a motion of indefinite postponement.
Just a second. Further discussion with respect to the chief's motion for indefinite postponement? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote on the motion to indefinitely postpone. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? So voted. That's indefinitely postponed. So I'll recognize the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? So voted. All those in favor? Again, thanks very much, and we'll see you in the fall. Oh, see you in the fall. Thank you, and good evening.